All right, thank you. Let's get this meeting of the Board of Education called to order at seven oh five. It would all rise from the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, the United Republic, which stands one nation, united, God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Willett, acknowledgements.
So we do have some awesome artwork from our middle school students. That artwork is, as you know, now being displayed at the, at the library. And so each month I'll send you notifications when I receive them because the librarian is the one who organizes it now. So she'll, she'll generally send me the notification that's going home. I'll post it to the Board of Ed dashboard so you know when, when the kids' stuff is going to be at the public library. But it was displayed at the public library recently. It's kind of hard to get each and every one of them, but you can kind of see where it was, where it was displayed. And I'll, I'll give you the names of the kids who were honored. And each month as it comes up, I'll put it both out to you in the dashboard before it happens. And then I'll also highlight it here when it happens. So that's available. And then the names of the kids and the different kinds of work they did are listed here. So Stacy Oliver, for instance, in grade six, she did the X-ray skeleton hand blending all. Will Pastels and all these, these amazing kids do things I can't even, you know, imagine. It's all in middle school color and art. Also an X-ray skeleton hand texture and art foil relief design by Macy Frost. I'm sorry, the other one was Riley Hampton. Also a three sample lines and a palette knife painting in the style of minimalist artist Etelle Aitken. And that student was Lucy Bender Powell. The line art three sample lines is George Grossman, mannequin drawing Troy Pravato. The kinetic sculpture relief was all inspired by Yakov Karam. And that's the kinetic relief sculpture Henry Durham did that. Also kinetic relief is Mackenzie Johnson, kinetic relief Kylie Stop, kinetic relief Samantha Evans, really Dell Tom, Jason DeLonge, also mannequin drawing Peyton Maury. You know, to mannequin drawing Carter Grassing, mannequin drawing Zoe, Zoe, sorry, Zoe Devine. And Patrick Bobarak, like the mannequin design. So they did some amazing things. If you get a chance to see them each month, we will be putting them down there and she'll be sending that out. So it's just really, again, wonderful group of kids doing a really great job making some very awesome art for our school system and for the public library and everybody to see.
Any comments?
Yeah, I went down and saw a roller today. They're pretty cool. I enjoyed it. There's a little variation of different techniques.
Is it back in the back from the first one?
I don't know if you know where the young adult area is. Yeah, if you go in the main doors and right to the right, it's around the other side where all the games are on the big glass windows, as you can see there. Yeah.
Any other comments? Any additions to the agenda? Entertainer motion for the approval of the October twenty-third minutes. Motion to approve.
It says October ninth. Unless I'm looking at the wrong agenda.
Okay, October twenty-third.
Tony, I'd like to motion to make an amendment to the October twenty-third meeting.
If you could remove my motion.
We need to add the names of the town councilors who were in attendance for the executive session on October twenty-third. So that would be Jacob Mari, Alex Nguyen, Jennifer Buckler, and Chris Maria.
You get that, Lisa? Okay, so assuming I will entertain a motion for approval of the October twenty-third minutes with the stated adjustments. Motion to approve the minutes with the stated adjustments. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Right, Rainey.
Epstein.
Ken?
Hi.
Dan?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
Katie?
Hi.
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 Hannah?
Hi.
That's approved with the recommended adjustments. All right, public participation. The members of the Talon Board of Education welcome members of the public to share their thoughts and ideas at this time. When appropriate to do so, members of the board and the administration may respond to comments during points of information. However, in consideration of those in attendance and in an effort to proceed in a timely manner, follow-up discussion may need to take place outside of the meeting setting. For those in the room, feel free to approach the owl. For those online, raise your Zoom hand and be recognized. Hearing none. We will close, or close, public participation.
Correspondence, we had two emails come in, one questions about tutoring and one with questions about the half days off and the days off that were responded to.
Points of information, would anybody from the board like to speak? Go ahead.
In 2021, the Connecticut State Department of Education established the Office of Dyslexia and Reading Disabilities. I was invited to attend the Connecticut Department of Education statewide dyslexia awareness campaign kickoff event on ten fifteen twenty-four, but unfortunately I could not attend in person. So I was recently able to watch the reported event. And I'd like to take a few minutes to do my part to spread awareness in support of this campaign. This awareness campaign is one of the first steps of the department to get the community engaged and educated on dyslexia. Atalant Senior Bol Zappatakas is one of three ambassadors to the office and serves on the student here. I was so impressed by all of the speakers and the information they presented, as well as the personal experiences many shared. Commissioner Charlene Russell Tucker read the office's mission statement, which is, "The Office of Dyslexia and Reading Disabilities is committed to providing through leadership and service insight, expertise, training, encouragement, and resources to assist those in education and related communities to succeed in helping all Connecticut students with dyslexia and other reading-related learning disabilities develop the reading and writing skills necessary to become effective lifelong learners, able to reach their personal and career goals and become involved, productive, confident, and satisfied members of society." She went on to state that the theme in education this year is "A Universe of Opportunity." This means that all five hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and fifty-two students in the public school system in Connecticut, including the roughly ninety-two thousand students with disabilities or variant abilities, have a future that knows no bounds. It means we're not limiting ourselves to what our students can achieve. It means we recognize the potential in every student, in our school staff, in our educators, our administrators, our students, and our parents, and we're investing in that potential. State Director of Special Education Brian Klimkowitz stated, "It really is a universe of opportunities, and we need to remind students of this on a daily basis. Build upon the strengths that they have and help them achieve higher levels than they even believe are possible." He talked about providing teens the ability to identify students' needs, building on strengths they have, but also very specifically identifying the needs that inform and preventions. He said, "We need the right intervention at the right time, and we know that thoroughly." Kristen Allen, Associate Education Consultant, explained that she felt this was more of a collaboration than a campaign due to the organizations and committees across Connecticut that are working together. Decoding Dyslexia Connecticut is a grassroots movement driven by Connecticut families and advocates concerned with the limited identification and access to educational interventions for dyslexia and other language-based learning disabilities within our public schools. They aim to raise dyslexia awareness, empower families to support their children, and inform policymakers and best practices to identify, remediate, and support students with dyslexia in our public schools. We are lucky to have a parent in our district, Jen Zavatakas, as a member of this organization, which in fact wrote the bill that was passed into law with one hundred percent bipartisan support from the legislature, to create the Office of Dyslexia and Reading Disabilities. Maureen Ruby, endowed chair of Social, Emotional, and Academic Leadership, stated that social emotional learning is not a buzzword, but is essential to access learning, especially for dyslexic students. Brandon Frame, chief visionary officer of the Black Man Can Incorporated, discussed the importance of equity and inclusion. He touched upon his experience traveling the world and meeting the Masai tribe in East Africa. When the tribe members greet each other, they ask, "How are the children?" And the appropriate response is, "All the children are well." He asked if we could say that about all students in Connecticut. As he reviewed several statistics, he repeated the phrase, "Are all the children well?" One of those points was that the United States ranks sixth in reading, tenth in science, and twenty-sixth in math. But when you remove students of free and reduced lunch, the U.S. ranks top three in reading and science and top ten in math. The most moving part of the event was when students on the student advisory panel answered questions about their experiences as students with dyslexia, how they feel having dyslexia, how they would like to be treated as students with dyslexia, and what their IEP means to them. Students also discussed wishing they had resources at an earlier age, needing support systems such as social workers to support them, and their love of the arts and how their brain just connects in those subjects. Their stories were both touching and heartbreaking. New London State Representative Anthony Nolan discussed what it's like as an adult with dyslexia and why it's so important to him to share his experiences, although difficult, in order to help the students of Connecticut. One of the many things I thought about while watching this event was the reading positions asked for by Birch Grove administrators in preparation of fiscal year twenty-five's budget. We were not able to add those positions, even though we were told during the budget workshop that special education referrals at Birch Grove are now superseding the other schools by thirty percent. The administrators at the intermediate school and the middle school both discussed the need for more counselors and social workers to support students, especially those with special needs. Studies show that early intervention is key, most importantly for supporting successful students and families, but it is also cost-effective for school districts in the long term. I'm going to send you all the video after the meeting. I hope you'll take a look at it, especially the students' perspectives, which begin at one oh four thirteen. I also hope as we start to think about the impending budget season, we focus more this year on why. We need to think about why we need resources, not just what resources we need. We need to think why we have certain class sizes and what their makeups are rather than just the number. We need to think about why it's important to direct funds to certain areas, items, and resources, not just what the dollar is. So that was kind of long-winded, but it was about an hour and forty-minute event. And it was just so interesting. And I just really wanted to give it its due and make sure that I brought it to the attention tonight and give it somewhere else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Others, would anybody else like to speak?
All right, just, just picking my mind. Well, do you have a, isn't there a superintendent workshop on dyslexia coming up? Or did I miss remembering?
There is one, but it's not, it's not, it's after the December holidays.
Yeah, it's in March or something?
Winter, spring.
Yeah, okay.
But we're going to do a workshop on that, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Excuse me. Who's the student representative reporting?
All right, so starting off, Student Council and Smith have their penny wars next week. And it's an event where at lunches there will be games and activities held, and we'll have a jog for each grade. And you can donate any kind of coin or dollar. Quarters, nickels, dimes, and bills will add points, whereas pennies subtract points. And at the end of the week, the grade with the most points will win a prize. Last year, we did an ice cream social.
And the musical audition for the high school production of Eighty East Town is tomorrow from two to three P.M. I'm not part of the musicals, but I do love going to see them. It's one of my favorite things in the spring. So go out and try to get up if you're interested.
Also, Botany Club has had a house plant sale next week from Tuesday to Thursday.
And, yep, and Tawned Idol is Friday on December sixth. We finally have a date. The Tawned Idol is a lip syncing competition that we have at the high school. It's a lot of fun. It was brought back after COVID last year, I think. It's a lot of fun. It's really cool. Our announcers are really great this year. So go buy tickets to that. And this is the last time I'm going to talk about this before I actually go. But tomorrow at this time, the, some Talon DECA members will be in Charlotte, North Carolina for our power trip. Power trip runs from like Thursday, sorry, yeah, Thursday night to Sunday morning. It's full of different workshops, different competitions, and Talon DECA will be running a breakout room of our own. As we've done in the past years, we're going to be doing DECA Land, which is a candy lamps themed board game that helps us study for our DECA test. There are four presenters, Will Cezaner, Asha Sophia Kanekam, and Andre McCowen. And last year, we got about two hundred and fifty participants. This year, we're looking for more. We are really big on our advertising this year. Shout it out to your friends if their kids are going on DECA Power Trip. But no, it's a really great experience for all the kids. And we usually come away with some pretty big successes. So watch out for next meeting, we'll all be talking about dyslexia then.
And lastly, boys soccer is going to the semifinals against Stonington.
Tonight probably already ended, but good luck.
They won three zero. Yay, boys! And our girls did fantastic and just came up short yesterday, but great for Talon Public School Soccer. So I'm glad you brought that up, ladies.
All right, any other questions, comments, or concerns?
Everybody in the room or online?
Do you have an update on girls soccer?
Girls soccer lost last night in the semifinals, but they had a really great season.
All right, thank you both. Committee liaison report. So communication.
I don't have any report at this time. We have a meeting next week.
Crystal? Next week. Policy.
Not much to report other than what's on the agenda today. Dr. Willett and I had an agenda planning, so more to come.
FFC.
We met at five thirty today. I'll present the follow-ups reporting from in our next board meeting. I was driving here, so didn't have time.
And negotiation. I thought so. It's coming. All right. Chairperson's report. At the risk of stating the obvious, a week ago Tuesday was election day. While I'm certain there's no limit to the conversations originating from that day, one has been front and center in my mind this past week. It has been one year since the Talon, the residents of Talon elected this iteration of the Board of Education to our seats. Roughly thirty-one million, five hundred and thirty-six thousand seconds since our friends and neighbors chose us to champion the cause of fiscally responsible academic excellence for our children. At this crucial milestone, I ask myself, what have we done? We negotiated a difficult budget season protecting critical programs while minimizing staff reductions. We analyzed co-curricular activities and moved forward on providing desired opportunities in this arena. We reached out to our staff, our parents, our volunteer organizations in an attempt to strengthen or at times awaken lines of communication. We have seized upon opportunities to discuss educational topics with the town council, both in council meetings and in one-on-one situations. We have proven time and time again that nine people focused on the educational well-being of our town can have meaningful and respectful debate despite the differing political parties that we were elected under. But have we done enough? This week, it has been our own words that I ruminate upon. Did our budget process last year maximize innovation and efficiency and support student growth? Did we push to nurture a just and equitable and inclusive school community? Notice that word, nurture, as in to encourage the development of. Did we work to ensure that school properties were places of both physical and mental security for our students and our staff? Please do not take my questions negatively. The intent is growth and reflection. At this midpoint, it is our responsibility to ensure that we are properly embracing this responsibility that we each chose. An organization's, an organization's policies are a reflection of its priorities. It should come as no surprise that I turn to our policies here. Policy ninety-ten is critical. It is the board policy that covers the role of the board and its members. We could spend an entire meeting going through this policy and the rabbit holes buried underneath each of its statements. In fact, if anyone is interested, let me know and we can discuss over a cup of coffee. For now, let's look at two points. The first general duty enumerated states that the board, quote, "represents the residents of the town in carrying out the mandates of the general statutes pertaining to education." Striving with that line that separates local and state needs, we are the Rosetta Stone that attempts to meld the reasoning between societal desires and local abilities. The second item that I want to draw attention to is in the specific powers and duties section. It states a responsibility to, in a quote, "keep the citizenry informed of purposes, values, conditions, and needs of public education in the town." Let that one work through for a minute. It is our responsibility to separate the wheat from the chaff and communicate not only the needs, but the values, conditions, and purposes behind them. As we prepare for the upcoming budget session, I want everyone to look at these tasks as indicators of responsibility. Personally, I expect the district CEO to produce a budget request that is a single-year snapshot of a multi-year plan. I expect to see evidence of progress along program maturation. I expect to see signs of investment to position the district for future growth. From the board to one ownership. Recognize that it is our responsibility to see the budget through the appropriate lenses and make adjustments based upon both practical and emotional priorities. The product that is passed on to the town will bear our name and articulate our passion for our town, our staff, and our children. From the people of Talon, I ask for understanding and communication. We are your representatives. As both individuals and as a whole, we are focused on ensuring that our children are fully prepared for an ever-changing society. Thank you. Dr. Willett, new business L one monthly financial report.
So as you're all aware, we do have the monthly financial report in the first meeting of every month. And so monthly financial report for this month has a budget balance of eight forty-five, five oh eight, it's about one point nine three percent remaining. The budget summary item or one pager that includes overview of all of the budget areas. I'll go through some of the highlights of this, but I won't obviously go line to line. And then if there's any questions, I can report them. I'll either answer them now if I can, or I'll answer them on the board dashboard at the next meeting. Overtime, code one thirty, is over budget by about two thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars. That's due to the need for custodial subs. We talked a little bit about this in the other meeting. There's been a lot more illness and medical leave. So there's been quite a few subs at the beginning of the year. We're also going to be transferring and moving some lines for fiscal year twenty-six to get some of the subs. Right now, one thirty through one thirty-nine in FFC, and you see it as kind of one thirty here. They're all overtime. And so we'll be moving some lines around so it's accurately reflecting where the subs are coming from. But the bottom line is that it's due to medical and the needs and illnesses, and so we're covering that. Stipends one fifty, over budget. We've talked about this one in the past. That's going to be a part of the report every month going. It's because we have special education deeds and we had to provide stipends for the coordination of those needs. That's mainly leap-focused and then counseling-focused. In addition, we needed to create a transportation club, so to speak, to manage children at BGP. As the buses arrive, we need to have one that managed kids, especially as the teacher contract ends at the end of their contractual day, they need to hand it off to staff. And so there are advisors that are provided a stipend that watch the kids until all buses have arrived. So the buses aren't late. It just happens, it so happens that it's typical that the bus process goes past the contractual day of the teachers. So that has to be covered, and that's part of that as well. So that's not really going to change. You're going to see that pretty much stay the same the entire year. Health, life, disability, two-ten is over by seven thousand. Again, you know, we're at the beginning of the year, so these aren't, these aren't huge overages and so on. And they're balanced by other lines, as is typically the case. But this can happen when you have vacancies and then you have people coming in and retirees and the health and life insurance. You know, less people paying in at a certain point in time will affect how much we have in the account, so on. So it's, it's over by seven, but that'll move along as year moves along and those get reconciled. Tuition five sixty, that's over by seven thousand. Again, not a massively big number there, but that's something that we're watching. And as you know, that kind of thing can change as the year goes on. So, you know, that, that's not something atypical. That's about it for the overages. I'm going to just stop there. And if anyone has any additional questions, can you take it or?
Yeah, so I just want to touch, go back to this bus issue over at Birch Grove. For this, it has a re-blocia because of the teacher contractual agreement. Was this something that a time was adjusted that we didn't have this in the previous ten years? Or why is this new expense happening just this year, starting?
So in the past, there's been various methods of managing this and not as effectively as it's going to be desired. So this is a way of managing, you know, putting an end to any fluctuations in this. It's always been a factor. It's just, we're trying to solve the problem for good. And this solves the problem for good.
So you're having to pay additional funds to people to?
Well, we give a stipend for the club to the teachers, which is actually a very cost-efficient way of managing that, because otherwise you'd have to provide.
Well, what was happening, say, two years ago, how was it being paid for?
Well, the, there were teachers that had to, you know, watch as, you know, the buses arrived and that wasn't working out very well.
They weren't, were they? Well, I guess one of my, my questions, were they being paid two years ago? But it just sounds like you're saying from, maybe I'm mishearing what you're saying, that we're providing extra funds now for this bus club or whatever?
The teachers' union looked at it as a violation of contract to have any kind of overage in time, even if it were a few minutes, which is understandable.
Yes.
And so, you know, that came to a head very recently and needed to be resolved.
All right, that's a resolution of the matter.
Yeah.
All right, so the backstory, I'm just not aware of, but I'm trying to get at here.
Yeah, it was brought up as a concern. This was the resolution.
Okay, okay, all right. That's it for now. Other question?
Yeah, what about, you know, some of the ones that are severely under budget? Well, instructional supplies, six-ten. You know, we're hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars under budget. Aren't we buying a lot of supplies in bulk upfront?
Well, last month was two-ten. And so it's, you know, it's, it's one sixty-four now, you know? So it's going to get eaten up. I mean, look at that chunk, two-ten to one sixty, you're looking at a forty-fifty, you know? And if you look at that over the next couple of months, we don't have enough capacity to buy paper to store it all, for instance. And if you buy too much paper and you try to do that, the mice get, you know, not that we have any mice, but you know, things happen to that. So we can only buy things in certain iterations, and that's why you'll see that. But you'll see that dropped by, what is it, from two-ten to one sixty-four? So at least forty-six thousand, you'll see it jump, you know, it's kind of drop like that over a second.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other questions?
All my thanks next time. I've got a fair amount of notes. We went line by line on over, under in FFC, so after we provide, nothing then.
Got a couple questions, but I'll wait for that. Thank you, Dr. Willett, new business L two, December twentieth, consideration of half day.
So this item doesn't have an, you know, an associate attachment, because it's basically very simple. There's a request to the board that December twentieth be a half day for students and staff in, in what the December. Um, for students and staff in, in what the December half-day was requested. So we put it up to the board, Board of Agenda Planning and the Board of Agenda Planning brought it to the board for consideration. I think that the thinking behind it is that, um. You know, that it's been a very challenging year for everyone. And that, um, parents, uh, may appreciate the kids getting out just a little bit of release if they can, uh, begin whatever travel that they're engaging in. Um, that, uh, staff would appreciate that. Um, you know, that type of thing. It can be done in a, in a number of different ways. You could also just make it a typical day for staff and then ultimately staff, you know, organize things and, and then go on their way. Um, so it's, it's really just put out there to see if the board would be interested in it. Uh, a lot, there's a feeling that there's not a lot going on, you know, when you get to the half-day point of the day before the holidays, there's not a ton. From an attentive point of view, that's actually going on there. So it was a request made to me that I said I would carry up to the O E A P and then you guys carried it to the board, so.
So let's comment questions.
Uh, I'll start. I, I talked to my high schooler. Today, being that it was a half-day when I got home from work and I said, what are half-days like for you? He's like, well, we have one full class and then three half-hour classes. Said, do you get anything done? And he's like, in the one class we do, but the other three half-hour classes, nothing really gets done. So I'm not sure. Yes, we count half-days. Um, as school days. But I'm not sure how much instruction gets done and I have those concerns that we switch to a half-day, it counts as a. As a check mark on our days done, but I'm not sure how much instruction and learning is getting done in half-days. And we've added to our half-days this year because of the, you know, the need to, to add to them. So that's, that's my concern.
So it's funny, I asked my high schooler the same thing. And she explained the exact same thing, said that, you know, it's the one full class and she has the other classes, but she said that they get a fair amount done. Uh, that it's only around the holiday time when there's really kind of an, you know, less of a push to get things done. Cause they're coming up on like a major break. Um, so I guess for me, like, I'm, I'm also concerned about there being instructional time. But I do think it's adequate and I'm a little more concerned about teacher burnout and how that impacts the educational environment for the students. So those are just my thoughts on it.
Jim was up for our shooting, so go ahead and make.
Um, I think my day comments is that, um, I don't think any of us are surprised to hear that there's burnout. Um, with staff, um, we've seen that, obviously in the teacher survey nationwide. Um, we know that from our past, you know, budget season that, you know. We have had to add to their responsibilities in a lot of different ways. Um, for me, this, you know, there's not a lot we can do financially to ease burden. Um, I've heard from friends in other districts that their district has been, um, more lenient when it comes to, you know. Taking time off and mental health days for teachers. Um, I think, uh, you know, obviously we're just grateful to have teachers in this occupation still. The problem with that is that, you know, when you do that, you're putting children in for subs and obviously not everybody's taking the same day. So you have. Sub in this class one day or sub in this class or, you know, in the younger years, you're out for the whole day. And there's costs associated with that too. Um, I look at this, guys, it's kind of like, you know. Here, these are our employees and they're, they're asking us for something. I don't think that it should be a typical request. This is the first time that they've requested it. They're asking for some help. Um, it's the first time I've ever seen a request like this come through to this level. And, um, you know, being that it is the day before a long break. Being that, you know, the children are going to be less attentive, you know, the day before a long break. It seems to me that there's not a, there's not a big loss here, but the gain is, you know, respecting that our employees asked us this. We're giving parents a month's notice. Um, it's something that we can do. We can do it once. So that's kind of where I stand with it.
In the past, you have done this, the, but, but the caveat is that whenever a weekend has been involved. Back in, I think nineteen, it didn't, but in other years, the day before the break has been a half day. But in twenty nineteen, it wasn't because it also resembled this. There was a weekend and whenever there's a weekend. So we usually don't do that after. That's why it came up. Cause some people said, wait a minute, we've had this half-day in the past, you know, it was parents and others, staff and parents. And I explained that not usually when it surrounds a weekend, which is why it came up here. Cause you have done it, but you know, but when there's a weekend like this, not, you know, like in twenty nineteen, we didn't. But that they said, well, we had it these other years, why not? So I said, I bring it to the board.
Uh, how did tendence, sorry?
Yeah, I just, uh. I'm necessarily in favor, I'd rather have my son, both of my children in school. Um, on this Friday, cause when I didn't look at the calendar, there was like a twelve that we'd gone out of school, like twelve of the next fourteen days. Out of this particular day for the few hours. And a couple of people have approached me and put the, especially more or less for the younger, I think, grades in schools. Birch Grove and T I S specifically, that there's a lot more stress put onto the, either the family or grandparent or neighbor or somebody like. Like you said, Bill's like, oh, my kid was home. Well, you know, I can't leave my eight-year-old son home for five hours. I mean, yes, I work from home. It's not the case, but I mean, there's a lot of other people aren't in the boat that I am to be fortunate enough to be at home. Who would, it puts a lot of extra stress and pressure monetary obligation on families. To not have their kids in to, you know, be at school till three or four in the afternoon, so. Um, I'm not in favor of having the extra day just for that reason alone. And I think the loss of time of so many half-days already on the calendar that, you know. Like Bill was even saying, it's got that limited time on all of these other days that we're checking off the full days. That we're losing hours already throughout the year. As far as the learning loss aspect of it, not necessarily, but I respect that teachers have extra time off. As more or less the learning aspect that I'm concerned about.
Jayden, uh, so you're in it.
Yeah, it, it was, um. I'll, I'll just mention these two things is, uh, there are benefits to, you know, sort of decreasing the, um. The full school day to sort of a half-day, including sort of time management benefits, what, regardless of what they're doing with the rest of their day. Um, you know, similar to sports, you should play multiple sports, you should try multiple sports, you should dur-, you know, learn all these skills from doing all these different things. You know, uh, uh, on these days, especially so close to the holidays, I just think it's so important that we're letting, we're giving, we're giving students and staff. You know, more choice in, in, in how they spend that time closer to the holiday season. And so that's just the, the human aspect of it, you know, the time management sort of aspect of it. And the, the other aspect of it is there is a sort of learning efficiency, you know, uh, sort of benefit there as well. That one class, you know, even I remember from my time in high school, that one class, um, you know, those teachers, they're, they're focusing on that sort of. You know, essential, um, 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 material, you know, that, that one full class. There's still essential material, uh, being, uh, discussed there and, and, and sometimes even tested on there. Um, and so these days aren't necessarily just a wash, they're getting, they're being productive. Uh, during the day, uh, those thirty-minute sort of periods of time, um, they are sort of a, you know, reduced. Uh, structurally, I guess, is, is, is a way to describe it, but at the same time, there's still. Um, there's still a class going on and there's still instruction happening, regardless of how te- intense that instruction is. It could be, you know, maybe we're playing a, you know, um, a simulation today, or maybe we're doing this or doing that. It doesn't really matter. I think there's still. Um, you know, some, some, some pretty. Intense, uh, learning efficiency benefits here too. So, um, you know, I, 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 right now, I'm in favor. Let's, let's give these folks the half-day, you know, let's, let's, especially again, around that time of year, you know, if you ask me. Within the first, you know, two weeks of school opening and we're just getting started and what, you know, maybe, you know, situation, you know, situations are situational. You know, so, but, um, so maybe that situation, I'm not looking at it that way, but in this one, um, you know, I'm definitely in favor, you know, let's give them the half-day. And, 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 uh, you know, let them benefit, let them all benefit.
Uh, sorry to jump in front of you, by the way, but when we're talking about, um, the historical trends and back in like twenty, when we do the half-days. Is there a big change in attendance, uh, like our numbers? Because generally those guys have lower attendance in general.
Um, and so, uh, there probably won't be a big difference. I have to pull, but on that day, it does.
Yeah, no, I see, I see both sides, cause I'm a parent. It's like tough to have everybody watch it, but my eighteen-year-old son wouldn't be keeping myself, but. Should hear everybody else. How about, uh, the two of you guys? What are you, what do you typically see?
Yeah, so as one of the two people in this room who actually goes to the half-days at this school, um. I agree with a bunch of different sides, you know, I agree with Bill that it's true, the thirty-minute segments of classes, we don't learn as much as we do on a usual day. That's pretty obvious, thirty minutes versus an hour, thirty minutes. But also Jane's right, we don't just slack off in those classes, like when I have math classes on my half-days, had one two weeks ago that was a half-day. We had a quiz, same with the math class before, we also had a quiz, she uses those half-days to do little quizzes. So we do actually have, um, important meaningful time in set classes like today. The day before our unit exams, we do a study day. We did a short and steady day, actually got less material than we usually do. So especially with the rotating of schedules, which I'm not a huge fan of, like I get it, but it's confusing. But, you know, we do have over the course of the year, a pretty equal amount of learning in every class. It might just not be all at the same time. Um, but like for the holiday season, season and for this half-day right before the day, I think personally. That it's a really great idea. I mean, no person going to school is focused on school the day before holiday break. I know that for a fact. I know that with me, I know that with her, I know that all of my classmates, no one is focused on school. And a lot of people just aren't there anyways. A lot of people are traveling, a lot of people are on vacation already. There's so many different circumstances that I think that especially for a day like that, it's important to have the half-day for the students, for the parents, for the teachers. And I know that there is a lot of, you know, concern with some parents that aren't able to take care of their kids on half-days and that is absolutely. You know, valid, that is absolutely concerned and something that we need to work on, but. I think that not only for teacher burnout, not only for student burnout, which gets a lot during the holiday season. I think that it's important and I think it'll be a good break and a really great send-off for the holiday season.
I have to completely, yeah, those thirty-minute classes, though they are shorter, we're not just slacking off. They can't just be written off as doing nothing. Um, it might be a shorter time, but that doesn't mean you don't get work done. A lot of our teachers understand that their time is limited within the school year and so we have a lot of classes that, and lessons that we need to get jammed in. So we don't take those thirty minutes to do nothing. We are obviously learning and doing as best we can with the short internet of time. And I have it being the right, the day right before holiday season. A lot of people are gonna be absent, but. That is, can also be because of traveling and other things, not just because it is a half-day.
Also, we usually just get more homework anyways for what we don't make up, so, you know.
Thank you. Now, the only, only thing, um, as far as if, if we do a half-day, are teachers still in the building? Like, are they?
But generally, yeah, but you know.
Like they're training or something?
There wouldn't be, there would probably not be training that day. It would be, there would be things that, there would be logistical things, they clean up, they get ready, they wrap up, they pack up, they do things that, you know. Organizationally, but there probably wouldn't be a lot of trainings on that particular day, whereas December eleventh, for instance, is packed. So when you have a typical, typically our day, every minute is packed for the teachers with that time and every minute is accounted for. Um, this is different, when you are releasing the day before a holiday break, if you're, if you're gonna do the half-day, they're not walking out with the kids, but. You know, that's not gonna be a professional development day per se, it'll be gathering, getting ready for the coming, you know, semester and, and things like that, but they're not. There's not gonna be a key that, thanks.
Dana, go ahead.
Uh, thanks, Tony. Um, can you hear me all right?
Yep, yep.
Uh, perfect. Um, first of all, I definitely see everybody's point, cause obviously this is our time for, for our future to be developed and molded. Um, by our experts and which are our educators in the classroom. Um, I appreciate, you know, everybody's points of it because there's pros and cons either way. Um, I think one of the big things that we need to listen to is we do have people asking for this and they're asking it for a reason. I don't think they're asking it so they can have bon-bons and margaritas and hot cocoa and rum early for the holidays. I think they truly are looking for, um, a reprieve. Um, so we need to be cognizant of that. Uh, we heard it from our students and in, in the room tonight. Um, how they experience half-days and what they see at the high school. Um, and their experience, not only on the need or the desire for that half-day. But also how that half-day is experienced. Um, it is instructional, there's quizzes. Um, our educators are the resident experts that are utilizing that time as wisely as they possibly can. Um, to fit in said curriculum and educational and instructional time into those shorter blocks of time. Um, I think although the same, similar instruction occurs, it's just in a different sequence or a different rhythm. It doesn't mean it's not happening and not happening to the full extent, it's just a different package, if you will. Um, I think I am a full-time working parent, um, so, uh, my husband's a full-time working parent. So I do see where that stress, um, can come in. Um, we do have after-school programs that I have. One child in, I have another child in that's in that middle age, so where do they go? Are they too old? They're probably old enough to be babysitting and helping out, um, other people, so. Finding that, um, when it's a half-day, who, who, you know, figuring out my workday, I can, I can understand and empathize. With other, uh, fellow working families. Um, however, we are doing this well over a month and a half in advance. I think we have an opportunity to make suggested arrangements. Um, I don't wanna minimize that stress on those families. But I also don't wanna minimize the stress on our educators that are reaching out to us for this opportunity, um, to propose a half-day. Um, again, there's so many pros and cons. I think we can spin the conversation either way, why we'd wanna say no and why we'd wanna say yes. I just think we need to be cognizant of, you know, all points of view when it comes to that and. Um, hearing from our students in the room and I appreciate you ladies for always getting involved and being as candid as you possibly can with us. It's, it's refreshing and eye-opening. Um, but I think there's a lot to be said about having that half-day. Uh, for the mental, social, emotional effect on our students and our staff and the families around that.
Alright, thank you. So, so from my perspective, you know, I certainly recognize, you know, that, that, that it's a very stressful time. Not only for, for the parents, the, the teachers, the students, there's a, a lot going on and, and a lot of change that's happening right now. Uh, which is why, you know, when, when Dr. Willard brought it up to the agenda planning, I was really excited. Not only that the idea came up, but excited to bring it here, to have those conversations to, to try to entice additional ones coming up. And now, when it comes to the half-day though, and, and you know, when we do the calendar and we go through and we have that discussion about. The half-days that have to be filled with professional development, they're, to your point, Dr. Will it jam-packed with the requirements that come from the state. We, we start talking about, you know, the, the, the holidays and the gaps and the vacations and how Bart, right? We wanna do school, you know, in June and when we wanna start in August, all under the guise of putting. Teachers and students in classrooms. I start getting concerned when we're talking about decreasing that. Uh, Jenna, I recognize the point you're making that, you know, other districts from teachers out or let teachers, let teachers take days. Uh, a little more liberally and the substitute issue, you know, having to replace it with substitutes and what that creates. But it's still a student in the classroom. In this case, we're talking about letting, you know, a half-day, letting the students go home, letting the teachers do what they need to do in the schools. But decreasing the amount of time that we got a kid in the classroom trying to learn. It's different, at least again, in my perspective. It's different, at least again, in my perspective, it's not like we're talking about the middle of a really long stretch of, of time that we've got class and end of sometime in the spring, there's that period where we, we just don't have much time off of in the weekends. And we start talking about that. In this case, we're talking about the day before break anyway. So that if we just hold on a few more hours, then we're off for an extended period. While I recognize and things haven't changed in the twenty-plus years since, you know, I was a student having to do this, that not a lot of traditional up and front lecturing happens or even the attention spans are minimized. For as the parent of, you know, former elementary school now, the I S student, even that time sitting, playing games or, you know, doing the, the color and the numbers, she's learning. And so I'm wondering that school as often as possible. Again, just to kind of bring that in, you know, I certainly recognize the value and I understand wanting a little time off, you know, to try to get your mind ready to de, you know, really decrease and step away from it. I still think teachers, their kids and teachers in classroom have value in increasing that, but it's, it's a slippery slope.
I don't know that I can add more to that. I obviously have a long history of, I think the teachers, the students do the best when they're in the classroom with the teachers. And I think it's important, we've already cut a three half days, so it's day and a half. We just got a letter from, you know, a parent about that. And I, I, again, it's right before a holiday, they're going to be off for, you know, two weeks or whatever, ten days. It's, it, you know, we're right on that. Hang on for another few hours. I, I just, I just think it's not really the best thing in terms of education for the students and that is what we're here for. We, we've just talked about that with, you know, a number of things. Um, so anyway, I don't need to go on. I just feel as though it's best to have the kids just stay in school for the day and then yay, vacation.
All right, thank you. What? Entertain a motion to move this to board action. Discussion.
I just want to thank our students very much for speaking up and contributing to the conversation. Your opinion is very valuable.
Absolutely. To, to your point, it's the two people that actually have to do this. It's a, it's a respect and that's critical. Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, reading. Moving. Dan?
Hi.
Dan?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
Katie?
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
I, Dr. Willitt, let us move this to board action item N three. That being said, board action item N one.
This is the policy forty sixty, uh, as we have discussed on prior meeting, it is one of the two title nine updates. Um, the title nine updates are kind of overlays, ship and a given provides us the model, um, as you noted. And last time, there are three links here, the current policy that's proposed and then the strikeouts between the policies and ship that was provided. So, uh, that I'm just going to put a period there. There's two you're looking at, uh, tonight that you looked at uh, last meeting as well. The first one is in the workplace. The second one is students. They are similar to each other, although there's some nuance differences, but it's basically taking all the law and the codes and making sure that it's covered in policy. And it does change sometimes with, um, state changes, it changes with federal administrations, presidential administrations. So it may change again. But, um, this is the latest update.
Okay. Discussion. As Dr. Willitt mentioned, this is the second read for this policy. Dana, do you have any comments as committee chair? So entertain the motion to, you have it written there. There you go. Approve the updated policy forty six. Discussion.
Tony, it's Dana. I couldn't respond to you guys when you called on me a second ago. I apologize. But no, I don't have any discussion or anything to add, but I was trying to unmute. My apologies.
Fair enough, fair enough. Scared. Yeah. All right, reading.
Hi.
Jen? Dan?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
Katie?
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
And I as well, Dr. Willitt, motion passes. Board action item N two, policy fifty seventy.
So as I said, more is the update this time. It's on the student side. Similar language, um, so many wants differences, the current, the proposed strikeouts are there. Uh, and again, it's just a update.
Dana, any comments as public seat chair?
No, no, both things are pretty straightforward. Again, I apologize for the mute problem a minute ago.
Any comments? All right, so entertain a motion to accept policy fifty seventy. Motion to accept policy fifty seventy.
Second.
Discussion. Reading.
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Dan?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
Katie?
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
Motion passed. Thank you. And item N three. Approval of the consideration for a half day as discussed above. Comments? All right. So I will entertain the motion to approve the recommendation to make December twentieth a half day.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I do, I have something to say, Tony. I'm sorry.
Right, Dana.
Um, there's my hand. Um, sorry, tech, technology tonight. Uh, I just think that we needed in, in, in deliberation of our vote, I think we need to really listen and, uh, to our students' perspective tonight in the room. Um, I think that they're, they're boots on the ground, ground floor, uh, visions of what, vision of what's happening in the schools. And I think that their perspective is wholeheartedly, um, it's, it's weighing huge on, on, on my decision. I just think we need to really take into consideration what they had to say this evening. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Other discussion? Reading.
Nay.
Jen?
Hi.
Dan? Brian?
No.
Bill?
Nay.
Katie?
Hi.
Jayden?
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
And I am a nay. Dr. Willitt, motion passes. Right. Public participation, comments limited to items on this agenda. Again, people in the room, feel free to approach the hour online, raise your Zoom hand. Big no rush. Right. So I'm going to shift points of information. Anybody from the board that would like to speak? That being said, I will entertain a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of the superintendent evaluation and goals. Dr. Willitt?
Motion to enter executive session for the purpose of superintendent evaluation and goals with Dr. Willitt.
We'll get a second.
Second.
Discussion. Reading.
Hi.
Dan?
Hi.
Dan?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
Katie?
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
I'm going to, I as well. Dr. Willitt, any comments on the future?
No, just a friendly reminder that we get half those. Those instructional rounds coming up, sign up for them and.
That is the next one next year.
Anyway.
Yeah, next year.
Just you can sign it down.
You know. I'm for it, but that's what's on there.
I'll be there. It's a good one.
Now, Tony, I had a good time walking around the high school last week.
That's what, uh.
Last week?
Yeah, if the intermediate two weeks.
Yeah.
All right. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Recording in progress.
Discussion. Reading.
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Dan?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
Katie?
Hi.
Jayden?
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
And I as well, thank you all.